Uh the uh final date is this month, this month end.
Okay.
Yeah, please uh fill the form by this month end. And if you are a sales master, if you have the confidence, you will do two time sales master in pre-vari, you can fill the form by this month end. They announced the news.
Okay, well let's make sure our dates are because I was telling Rao that if you're not going, there's no reason for me to go. But if you go, I'll go. So that's why I'm waiting for your okay because um I suppose going to my shoulder surgery, but I'm gonna postpone everything. So I could be there for my team. So so you let me know how many people are going and if even though you only go, I'll I'll meet you out there, okay?
Yes. Uh yesterday Jacob called me.
Uh huh.
Uh one of our royal master went Chennai.
We have a uh we have a royal master in Chennai?
Yes, yesterday. Yesterday was she was in Chennai. Uh Rao went to to his hometown.
Oh, okay.
So his phone not out of reachable, Jacob called me.
Okay. So I mean the royal master from Korea was visiting Chennai?
Yes, yes.
Go, oh, okay. I thought that was like, you know, royal master in from Chennai from India.
Uh she is from Korea. Uh she is here uh from last to Kolkata seminar onwards. She extended uh her visa.
Okay.
Uh building business in India.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Actually she came for one month. But she extended one more month and now she extended her visa for one year to build business in India.
My goodness. All right, well, you know, whatever it takes to build your, you know, business is what we do, right?
Yes.
So how's everyone doing, my team?
Yes, friends, anyone ever na madamgarh to interact avachandi? Yes, sir, Samradigaru, welcome.
Good evening, Edi Madam.
Good evenings. How are you?
Excellent, excellent.
Hemo him time for me.
Friends are looking very handsome and younger.
Yeah, thank you.
There you go.
I'm using that uh form uh that set completely using myself only.
Yes, this is the best thing.
Yes ma'am.
Are you okay? What happened to your neck?
Pardon? Nothing madam?
Yes.
Nothing, nothing, fine. Madam, whenever some US meetings are going on, kindly give us the link. Why means we have some friends there also. We can ask them to join with you.
Which one?
In US some meetings, your group meetings will be going on then now madam.
But our time is just totally different, so it's kind of hard, you know, you.
Yes, I am talking about there in US people only, not in Indian people.
Oh, okay.
I have twenty five friends of mine in US.
Okay.
Uh out of that already I have passed messages for fifteen people.
All right.
Uh they will join initially also. I have given one number by name Srivijaya to you also.
They could call me anytime.
Uh she didn't call, that's what I will send them the meeting timings, then they will join in the meeting like this.
Okay, what what area? Because we have all different time zone here too.
Okay.
So I need to know where they are.
You send me, if possible, they will join, otherwise they will call and tell to me. It's not possible like that.
Okay.
Okay ma'am.
All right.
Yes, next month I am trying for a DM. Thank you.
Jiviradi, what happened to your neck?
No ma'am, nothing.
Oh, okay. I thought you had a neck brace.
How are you man? Good morning.
What happened? Huh?
Good morning, how are you?
Good, good, good. I I'm I'm doing good. You know, there are so many people getting car accident here, you know, so even Star Master uh got in a car accident, coming back from uh LA, she drove down to LA and seven car crash.
Oh, oh my god.
Yeah, so I mean she's not hurt or anything like that. Um the car in front of her hit something that was on the road and it flew to her windshield. And so she, you know, really broke in the airbag, went up and it was like seven cars involved. Um yeah, it's so please be careful. Um I know how India, you know, you guys are crazy, but driver, but be safe. You don't know what others do, yeah, it's.
Doctor Jiviradi is a robotic driver.
Who?
How is it man?
Uber drivers are crazy in India.
Michael Falso.
So does anybody has any two thousand twenty three gold extreme impossible goals that you guys have set, share with, you know, kind of share? It has to be crazy, crazy dreams, you know, I mean that's what our chairman says, right? Don't think about small, think about big, big dreams, like he did. You know, he says when he didn't have anything, he wanted to give million dollars and get cars and all that. He didn't have nothing. But look, after ten years, it will it came to all to pass. And he has set up hundred year, I mean solid business with Atomi. Hundred years, even though he's gone, it's already set up where there's Atomi Business Colleges already intact, right? People don't even have to go to college to learn how to make money. You could come to Atomi and go to Atomi Business College and you could make phenomenal income, have the freedom of time. Um so but more than that, without help, we do not have anything. You know, I could have been gone. So you know, if I didn't take care of my health, right? So having that phenomenal products in our midst is the blessing. You know, one of the crown master who was here, she said, you know what, this is exactly what she said. Anybody who's not taking Hemo Him, which is our signature product in our Atomi business, you're not gonna make it. She said that, it's like, okay, anybody who does not take Hemo Him, our signature product with our company is not able to succeed in Adami. I wonder why she said that? But when you think about it, you know, your health is most important. And if you don't know what our signature product does for all of us as an atomian, you know, how are you going to present anything else that we have? So you know, she wanted to be all of us really be successful and she's saying, you know, don't you know, make it fast. Don't slow down every single day, making your goals, setting your goals, accomplishing it every single day. Don't waste your time in one day procrastinating for what you want to do. Five years, four years, three years, goal set is very important. That's what I love about your leader, Diamond Master Vasu. He has his goal set, what he wants to do daily, weekly, monthly, yearly. I know he has his dreams down on his life scenario book. I know that. You know, so you think what you want to become and you will become that. It sounds stupid, it's but it is the truth. What you think of will come to you, it'll gravitate to you. So there's no negativity in Atami, no matter what as a leader or bus, you know, just the plain business builder, small or big, you have to think positive. Whatever you thinking in your head and say it through your mouth is gonna manifest sooner or later, it's gonna come to you. So keep on saying, hey, I'm gonna be sales master, I'm gonna be diamond master, I'm gonna be share rose master, right? And star, royal, crown, imperial, doesn't matter, two thousand twenty four, next year. Next year, anybody, anybody seriously is making Sharon Rose Master. Me and Star Master is gonna put something together, you guys come to United States and we all going to Las Vegas. Las Vegas, guys, to celebrate our first Imperial Master in United States of America. So it's gonna be a huge, huge event and I want my partners would love to come here and celebrate with us. Yeah, make it, you know, I mean get passport, get ready. You know, even though you don't have visa, start right now. That's what you do. You plan. If you guys don't have passport, apply for passport, then get the visa, all right? And if you guys need, you know, I don't know, visiting, I don't know what you guys need, anything that we could do to help you, get that? We are here for you. It's fun. As uh anyway, if you do ask Rao, you know, he's been here, so maybe he knows all ins and outs about the visa that you guys need to get. So I'm excited. Vasu, you're gonna be here next year.
Yes.
Okay, done.
I I got tickets from my upline.
Hey, I told you, be Sharon Rose Master, be here, I got you covered.
Definitely, I I will be Sharon Rose Master three times in twenty twenty three.
Fully, 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 you're going to be here. I got you covered.
Thank you, thank you, madam.
So get excited, guys. Make some big goals.
Yes.
Amila, you too. You got family here in Washington. You need to come and visit, okay?
Thank you, madam. Yes, friends, anyone? Uh Dinesh Bai, Narayana. From Venkateshulagaru.
Yes, sir. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Good morning.
Ma'am, ma'am, good morning USA.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, India. Thank you.
Kya Dinesh Bai kis rahe? Duty bhai?
Uh no sir, no duty, no, abhi ek phone pe prospecting complete karke bas free hua tha bas.
Hmm. Video on kiya to thoda.
Sir, kapde sattu bagad pann nahi raki.
Okay. Yes. Good evening. Wow, great.
Still working, huh? All right. You and your wife board, all right.
Ek plan tayyar kiya tha aur baiya baiya exercise bhi kar raha tha sir yaap hai. Ki diamond master ke liye hume karna kya hai? Aur jaise ki video ka under main thoda sa camera back chalu karta hu. So please. Ek diamond ke liye hume karna kya dosto? Diamond master hai, jaise ki mene mene apna video jo bana rakhaa iska adar pe aap diamond hai, undra lak TV aap complete hai. Aapko karna kya hai diamond ke liye sabse best hai ki aap apne eight semi sales master par workout karna hume.
Yes, Jiviradi, your plan joand.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, continue.
Ya, ki hume diamond ke liye self humare undra lak to complete hai, right? Hume humare left me ek sales master yahan pe aur right me ek sales master aapka yahan pe hai. Dosto ab karna kya hai ki ye jo sales master aapke left or right pe hai. Inke me down me aapko ek ek sales master pe kam karna, yani unki left or right pe bhi sales master pe hai. Even then aapko inke depth me jaake, yani pratek sales master ke niche aapko ek ek semi sales master pe workout karna hai. To is prakaar se aapke paas me achievement jada honge, plus payout bhi jada hoga aur kam aapka distribute hoga. Like this, jaise ki aap sales master pe kam karte to aapko kya karna padega? Pratek lak se aapko chhi chhi lak maintain karni padenge. Lekin agar ishi kam ko, agar aap semi sales master pe kam karte to kam aapka teen logo me division hoga. Jahan jis kam ko chhi chhi lak TV complete karnen me ek aadme ko mainat karni padti hai. Lekin agar aap semi sales master pe workout karte to dosto kam aapka teen jaga distribute hoga. Yani ki ab aap teen log mil karke us kam ko complete karenge. To dosto mere hisab se jahan tak main analysis kiya hai, aap diamond ki tayyar karte to usse better hai ki aap ek diamond first and semi sales, both sales master, first and second and sales master, third, four, fifth, six, yani ki total left me mila karke dekh ho jaye to aapko teen sales master aur right me bhi aapki teen sales master. Aur inke niche me down me jaake dekhoge to aap char aapki right me semi sales master, char aapki left, right me jaake semi sales master pe kam karo. To dosto ye team hoti aapki total mila karke fifteen logo ke, yani ki undra logo ke. Ab dosto jab aap diamond ke liye ya semi sales master, sales master ke liye keval aur keval, iske liye label ke liye jab total mila karke undra logo workout karte to dosto aapka kam hogaata, aasan. Ab baat karte calculation ki, dosto ek diamond ke liye agar chhi chhi lak TV ke hisab se agar hum promote kare sales master ko kiye hume chhiye dos sales master aur ek left, do left me, do right me, yani ki bolte to chhi chhi lak TV chhiye. Tab jaake ek diamond complete hoga. Lekin dosto agar ushi kam ko thoda sa aur bada de bolte to semi sales master bagad kam ko leke jaye to dosto total jo TV banata hai aapka total jo TV banega, vo banega aapka ek point baan me lak hai. Aur jabki base yani ki banata aapka dekhi, dekhi krone TV. To dosto ye total mila karke yani ki biyaaris lak TV extra workout karnen pe aapke paas me achievement aate total undra. Aur jabki aise kam karo to dosto aapke paas me achievement aayenge matre panch. To undra achievement better hai ya phir panch achievement better hai? Ye calculation ka visha hai dosto. Agar aap keval biyaaris lak TV extra karke, agar aap semi sales master pe focus karo to dosto achievement aayenge aapke paas me total fifteen. Aur dosto payout bhi aapka sabse jada banega to us condition me aapke paas me teen sales master left me honge. O teen sales master aapke paas me right me honge. Dosto isse behtrin agar koi calculation karke sabit kare. Isme dosto jahan aapko chhi chhi lak TV ke liye agar aap sales master ke tayyar karte. Dosto team chhiye aapko doso logo ke auto consumer ke rup me. Lekin, lekin dosto agar aap sale, sales master ke hisab se kam karte to dosto team chhiye matre pachas logo ke. Matre pachas logo ke, agar aap doso logo pe kam karna chahte hai ya pachas logo pe kam karna chahte hai, samadhari aapke aapke saath me hai dosto.
Thank you, Dinesh Bai. Great.
So simple ga, ante planned ga manam team ni two sides kana ka manage chesko ne vela galke te. Ippu unna tuanti, semi sales master option edaite unda, dhan upegunchkoni, easy ga sales masters gaochchu. Atla ne easy ga diamond master gaochana kuda, a semi sales master, a promotion edaite unda, dhan uses chusandi. So idhi, maybe ikka da zoom lo chette ardhanga pochchu. Personal ga, direct ga, interact aino walla tooti discuss cheshte, ardhane chesko ne, dhan implement jetaan kaavkas motari.
Thank you, Dinesh.
Thank you.
You know, when it comes to mastership, what I would like to say is that with just the general commission, we're able to make up very, very good income. But when you focus on mastership, whatever you're doing, it doubles up. That's why the mastership is, you know, something that you want to achieve. The reason is that, you know, if you're gonna do one point five million on both side, really focus on a semi sales master, right? Instead of making, uh you're supposed to make five commissions, correct? But when you do that, boom, you know, you get two hundred, hu- two hundred thousand one, which is about in America, two hundred dollars extra. So it's doubling what you're working for. You know, same thing as sales master, yes, you make four hundred fifty getting all only commissions, right? But when you make the mastership, that doubles up. So mastership is just encouraging people, if you're gonna work, why not work towards also mastership? I'm not saying to focus on mastership only because in general commission itself, you can make substantial money too. But again, without PV, there is no income. How does we get PV? We're sharing with others. PVs, you know, your consumption, everything. Our product is phenomenal, as you know, without it, I can't, I can't exist, seriously. Um I really believe Adami product has brought where I am healthy, you know, with beautiful skin, beautiful inside, physically, mentally, emotionally, in all aspects, financially. It comes as a balanced life where you could really help others. You know, so Atami is just not about being a business, it's about all life itself. And as an atomician family, you know, we cover each other also. That's what I love about our Adami. You know, you get the model that I made for our Indian group or even my whole team is like, nothing brings people together like Adami. Every center that I go, you know, I I put that logo, nothing comes people together like Adami. So when I come, I'm gonna bring, uh I'm gonna bring the sign to you, your office, big one wall, you know? Saying the logo, nothing, actually nothing brings people together like Adami. So please, you know, learn your product, take your product and see what it does to your body so you could share the testimony. That's what it's gonna, you know, sell. Your testimony, not the product, your testimony, because you're so excited about it. You know, so please, share every single day. So I just wanna ask, Ramesh, how are you?
Yes, sir, Ramesh, you're welcome.
Hi madam, good morning.
Good morning, good evening to you.
Yeah, good morning. Thank you, madam.
How's the business in Pune?
Yeah, slowly improve that is madam, there's a fast start is there. Uh I do that is the only part time is there, uh we have to spend in day in two hours only. Uh that's the reason slowly grow in my business.
Okay, you know, long as you're moving and you know, uh doing something every single day, that's good. Remember, you know what Abraham said, today and he said today, I'm sharing with this with you guys, today and Mumbai. If we capture that area, it's gonna be huge.
Yes, madam.
Since you're in Pune, you know, I mean that could be your territory.
Yes, that's correct, madam, correct. Your analysis is correct, that is.
So you know, I know, yeah, you have a full-time job, but that two hours that you're working with at me, you know what, talk to everyone you could possibly talk to, share the product and let them fall in love with the product and the business the second. The more consumer that you have, the, you know, it's gonna help to build your team, okay?
Yes, madam, yes. Thank you, madam. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, madam, uh our center got uh top ninth place in twenty twenty two.
Oh, okay.
Twenty twenty two, they announced the the results uh in leaders meeting privately. Uh our center in ninth place.
All right, how many, how many center is in India?
Uh one hundred and fifteen.
One hundred and fifteen, okay, all right. So what is the criteria? I, in America, is the volume, is the sign up, is the, the, I mean, we have a website, as you know, the band, we have to post things, you know? Um and then no complaints, four things they they look at to select number one center every month, but India doesn't have that, right? Every month, center of the month?
No.
Just the year thing.
Yes.
Any rewards?
They answered the top five in every quarterly, but in the twenty twenty two, they announced uh only one time.
Okay, well, next time I may maybe we'll do something like America, you know, because that kind of encourage center. Right? Uh to work on that because it does give extra things for the center, for example. You know, when I, you know, every time you get first, you get five Hemo Hems and five things that that really helps to, you know, sample it out, you know, do the facial, pass out the kit, right? Go people to go take it to use it, right? So it helps. Um let's talk to Abraham, Abraham about that.
Thank you, sure, madam.
Congratulations. That's good achievement, ninth, you know, one hundred and fifteen.
Thank you, thank you, madam. Uh yes, friends, atla ne, Anantapur lo i twenty ninth education center lo ka meeting jarugundandi. Recent ga center open out, garigindi. So dhan activities so full pledge ga, i Sunday nchi wallu start chesta unaru. So a sundarbanga arozu ka, two diamond masters ni invite chesi ragpati ga runder lo una center. Uh activities full pledge ga, Sunday nchi jarutai, arozu ka meeting undi, evrana a area lo mek telsina members evrana undi, walla promote jeychu, atla ne. Mek teams unna gane, walla kuda promote jeychandi. I Sunday twenty ninth, morning ten thirty ki, Anantapur lo education center lo meeting undandi. So andar kuda itilage chesko ne, thank you. Anyone enka, madangarh toote evrana interact aye dunte, interact avachandi? New members. Thank you, sir. Thanks for your message, Samradigaru and Ramesh Gaur. Thank you, madam. Yes, friends, anyone? Alane, madangaru, uh chetavunarandi, America lo first Imperial Master celebration anedi, uh Los Angeles lo celebrate chebutavunaru. Uh I think it's a romantic city. And beautiful city. Nijinga place ki vela lante, raspetunti, gane vela lemu. Uh but evr aite Sharon Rose Master outaro, walla ki, madam, personal ga, free ga trip offer chesunaru US ki. Uh aka, a function jarige lope, evr aite Sharon Rose Masters outaro. Walla ki, madam, tickets, provide cheshta unaru. So dani, andar kuda competition ka tiskoni, achchu chaygalke te. So ka Imperial Master Celebration, adi kuda mana Imperial Master, uh USA lo first Imperial Master. Uh she is okay, Healy, yes, madam?
Okay Lee.
Okay Lee, okay Lee.
Okay Lee is the one first, I'm pretty sure it will be her, yes, um.
First Imperial Master in USA.
First, first, yes.
So uh chala company chala grand ka cheshta undandi, a celebrationo. So chala prestige ka tiskoni cheshta unaru, ante after that Korea tarvata uh USA lo, oka Imperial Master, first branch anedi USA. Akka nchi Imperial Master raavutavunari twenty twenty three lo, it's already fixed. So a program ne live do chodochu, uh almost apritu madam, regalisavunaru. Evr aite Sharon Rose Master outaro, walla kaavkas mutandi. So andar kuda.
Yapravarko.
Sir.
Yapravarko.
September. September, madam, uh, it's before September.
I'm sorry?
Uh, she is.
Uh, what is the criteria for Sharon Rose Master? Till, or the time bond?
Oh, I'm, you know, long as two thousand twenty-four, you know, for, um, I think Sharon Rose Master, we're planning to, you know, bring them over here, United States to celebrate with a Imperial Master. So what I'm, what think, wha- what I'm going to do, I'm gonna put the video together of Las Vegas. Okay, I'm gonna ask my son to promote and I will, I will make a video. So you guys could share, Vasu, okay? Like I did the Diamond Master before I made a video of the Washington. This is gonna be in Las Vegas. Las Vegas is, well, in America is known as the, the party city. You know, is all light, bling, 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 bling. So what our chairman said when we had the meeting, he said, we, we gotta have it in place where everybody gonna come and see the celebration. Las Vegas is everybody in United States, everybody in the world, they wanna come because the, you know, casinos, the shows and the food and everything is there. So, um, that's why chairman chose Las Vegas because people will come to see what's going on. And it's advertising Adami itself, we got centers in there. Um, people love to come to Vegas, they, they just want to go. So no matter what, if they have to pay for it, they will go and have a good time. And they have a huge function places because big shows are in Vegas, all big shows, right? All the entertainers, they're all in Vegas. Um, so it's gonna be huge, huge celebration for United States, of course. So that's why I think the CEO, our chairman, has chosen the city of Las Vegas to have the ceremony. Enough space for everyone to enjoy and lot of blings, lot of lights. You know, just the excitement itself. So I will put the video together, samples of the city, what's there, so you guys could see. And let's say, I will, I will talk to Star Master, uh, and see what we've, we're gonna put together is. So, okay, I will do that. So give it, I mean, it's for two thousand twenty-four, so plenty, plenty of, plenty of time to get, you know, passport, if you guys don't have passport, you know, and visa's ready, alright? So, let's get excited.
Yeah, ma'am, what will be the, yeah, what, what would be the criteria to reach over there to see the ceremony? Sharon Rose Master, till?
By, uh, two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah, okay, sure. Hundred percent will start?
You know?
We are coming.
So.
Yeah, we are coming.
Yeah, you know, America, you know, once you guys get here, you guys gonna come here all the time. You guys come here and I go over there, okay?
Yeah, everything we will comfort by you, right?
Yes. So it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be incredible celebration, seriously, uh, of course for America and for Korea to have someone Imperial Master in foreign country rather than Korea itself, it's a huge celebration, absolutely. And.
Yeah, very nice.
What are, what are your thoughts of Vasu in India? Let's see, so far you guys have star there, right? Do you guys have a star there? No, I don't think so, just.
No.
Sharon Rose.
Sharon Rose is the highest pin here.
Okay, so, but I think, you know, two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty, maybe in two thousand twenty-five or twenty-six, that's a good possibility for Imperial Master. You know, I mean, in America, it took what, thirteen, well, almost fourteen years, right?
Uh, we will see Star Master in twenty twenty-three in India, definitely.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
Uh.
I'm sure. Okay, so that's kinda, uh, you know, goals set for you guys coming to United States for celebration. And if you come to Las Vegas, I don't know if you heard of a Grand Canyon. Grand Canyon is, um, world famous place too, it's very close to Vegas.
Yeah, so thank you, madam, yeah, yesterday, Samradikaru. Medangar personalga, na ka offer jaserande, uh, ticketsu.
Yes, uh, yes, ti- you know, yes. Ticket to United States and back to India, both ways.
Are you, are you, are you offering everyone in our team? Tickets to the US?
Are you guys all coming to Sharon Rose Master?
All, all the Sharon Rose Masters, right? You're offering tickets to here?
Sharon Rose Master, that's what Star Master said.
Sorry, come again?
I said, she, any Sharon Rose Master to celebrate title of Sharon Rose Master is got the ticket to United States and all the expenses. You got it?
Madam?
Yes.
There is ambiguity in your wording. Here, we are thinking, our people are thinking that we are giving to everybody.
No, 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 no. Only Sharon Rose Master.
Yes, madam, only Sharon Rose Master one time.
Yes.
Or three times.
One time.
One time Sharon Rose Master, if you become Sharon Rose Master in twenty twenty-three.
Sharon Rose Master in twenty twenty-three.
She will give, up and down to, yes.
And everything.
Yes, yes, sir.
These are tickets, everything.
Time of celebration for the Imperial Mastership, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, madam.
I'm gonna put the video together, so you will know clearly, okay?
Ma'am, how many days tour?
Huh?
How many days tour? Will you?
Uh, let, let me put that together, okay?
Yeah, company, company is offering uh, one Sharon Rose Master trip. We will cover the trip with, uh, uh, illustration. Madam?
So, yeah, well. Let's do this. I mean, like I said, we gotta think big, right?
Yes.
Yeah, we will try for this take up US trip.
Uh, in twenty twenty-three, I am going, uh, first trip is South Korea and second one is Thailand. Thailand, Thailand.
Oh, Thailand.
Thailand with our team, uh, Saint Master and Diamond Masters. And third one is USA.
Alright, you know, we are open to Thailand too, you know, so you go make some people, you know, as your deadline, okay?
Okay, we will try. And, uh.
I'm telling you, with Adami, it's not only about building, but you get, as you move up, you get to travel. And once you become probably Star Masters, for example, Vasu, you know, I know Adami corporate itself, they're gonna go, I mean, they're gonna have you travel to different countries to do seminars and that's what we do, you know, so traveling is part of Adami.
Yes, maybe, yeah. I will get another trip by company as a Sharon Rose Master.
There you go, yes, you will.
Yes.
Absolutely. Because of pandemic, I took the money. We could not travel, so. Um, yeah, but we have a Sharon Rose Master trip in April again uh, to Cancun, Mexico. And Cancun, Mexico is very, very lovely, lovely, lovely place, if you like water and beach, like a Goa, but ten ta- ten thousand times better than Goa, I think.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, madam. Thank you, all the leaders. Anyone enke evrana, interact ayyudunte, hand raise, smart radachandi, new members. Adusingaro, Apara garo, Surentharadi garo, Nayadi garo, Prasad Rao garo, Mastan garo, Narishgaro, Balu garo, RK garo.
Did anybody see the Diamond Master, uh, promotion video before of Washington?
No.
Really? I'm gonna play it right quick, so you guys to see. When you come to Washington, it's only three minutes, you, should I play it?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Okay, give me a just second, okay, hold on. Yeah, so you guys know what it looks like, okay, where is my video, is this movie, okay? I think this is it. Okay, hold on, okay. Okay, give me a sec, okay, here we go. Can you guys see?
Yes.
This is Seattle. This is my hometown. This is our Mount Rainier, famous Mount Rainier, beautiful. This was the hotel I was gonna put you at when you, you know, became Diamond Master last year. And this Tulip Festival, it happens in April. Miles and miles of tulips. And this is Space Needle, icon of Seattle. There's a restaurant on the top that we'll be eating there and it rotates three hundred and sixty degrees, so you could see all around. And this public market, seven pipe market, you could buy everything, anything here. It's so much fun, so much food. They come here to buy fresh fish, you know, and they throw, you know, anybody who wants to buy things, they throw, like, you know, and people lined up. Everything is so fresh. And this is casino with a buffet and you get to play and and this is like only ten minutes from where I, you know, where I live. And you know, these are just the lakes and parks everywhere. And I'm gonna take you around in a limousine. And I think about fourteen people fits in in, in this limousine. And this is the buffet, it's about fifteen minutes from our center. Seafood, uh, I mean, they got Indian food, they got all international food. And this, of course, you guys know where it's at, my little center. Lot of things happens here. And this is my corner, where I do Zoom every morning with you guys. And this is where we do facial for ladies to know our amazing, amazing products. And this is where everybody gets to taste our coffee, pure tea and Hong Sang Tang. This is a Mexican restaurant that we're gonna be taking you to. And seafood here is amazing, seafood here is amazing, amazing, amazing. If you like seafood, that is, who doesn't like seafood? So that was it?
Madam? Yes. Ma'am, vegetarian not available?
Huh? What did you say?
Vegetarian.
Hold on, let me shut this down. Okay.
Uh, he, he is, uh, asking about vegetarian food.
Vegeta- oh, yeah, there's a vegetable, you have, we have the most fresh vegetables, oh my goodness. The things that you have never tasted, there's a vegan, you know, I mean, like I said, there's lots, international food here. The best, ask Rao, he knows.
Uh, Abraham Lee said, uh, uh, in South Korea, chicken is vegetarian. And mutton and beef is the non-vice.
Okay, do I, you eat meat, right, Vasu?
Uh, actually.
No?
I eat, but, uh, uh, right now, I targeted for Sharon Rose Master, uh, that's why I avoided non-vice.
I know, I'm talking about, when you go to Korea, you gotta taste, you know, I mean, see, this is the thing. When you travel, you have to experience the world.
Yes, different types of.
You know, seriously, you, when you cut bread with people, it's important. You know, sometimes I don't like certain things, but I take it because I know their heart, right? And I wanna know their culture. So anyhow, I mean, Korean food is amazing because lots of vegetables, fresh vegetables, right? And little spicy side, uh, yes, you know, you don't have to eat meat, but burgogi and karbi, oh my goodness, is it ever, ever tasty? Seriously, so I don't want you to miss out, Vasu, that's why I'm going there personally to show you, you know, what Korea is all about, right?
Yeah, I, I will eat in Korea.
There, there you go, seriously.
Right now, I am not eating any na- na- vice.
Okay, see, I don't like, I lost some weight, right? Can you tell?
Yes. Ma'am, he, he started eating as, no non-vice, only he is trying to eating as.
No, I've been, I've been fasting too for praying, you know, you know, just like Vasu, I do the same thing, but I fast. So people goes, you lost weight?
He's eating our brains.
Say what?
No non-vice.
He is telling, he is telling also not eating non-vice, he is eating our brains.
Oh, brains. I, I, this is my food right here. And Hong Sang Tang tea.
Uh, that's why you are looking young. Uh, indeedly, I met one, uh, Royal Master, or he is seventy-four.
Yeah, you posted.
Yes, it was very shocking.
Um, this is Adami for you, you know, like, what, um, see, I mean, Hungyip Park said before, he didn't really notice the difference in himo him, but now he says, because he's getting older, that himo him is really boosting him, so he really advertised himo him more than he ever has. Um, like I said, himo him will keep you intact. It's a functional food, remember that, if you don't eat nothing at all, if you take himo him, bada, it'd be good.
Yes, uh, really, we are, uh, lucky, have that himo him.
Yes, 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 yes.
Thank you, madam, uh. Today is a great session. Yes, friends, anyone in Kaurana interact ayyadunte, unmute chesko matla chandi. Yes, sir, Balu Garo, good evening. Oraganti Balu Garo.
Sir, good evening, sir. How are you, sir?
Super, super.
Thank you, sir. Now we are good.
Late ayybandi.
Okay. I, I will show my face in.
Sunday vasunnar gada?
Uh, Kambal sir, mere edo program annar gha sir, anantapur malaa?
Lelele, adi akkadunna laki, mana program mande.
Okay, then.
Akkadavanna unte, anantapuru promote chesko.
Antena sir.
Ekkare ekkare jar, ante. Satami.
Hmm. Gudu, Sunday, anygalav.
Uh, ochen morning, ten thirty, eleven work ochen. Sir?
Hi, madam.
Hello! Oh, there you are!
Madam, good, good morning.
Good morning! Good evening to you!
Uh, madam. Okay. Okay, then.
Yes, sir, mere signal takkuunatlunde, Balu Garo. Thank you, thank you, leaders. Anyone in Kaurana. Matla devunthe, hand raise smart lada chandi.
Vasu, I just wanna share with him or him. Two, two packets for normal people, healthy people who wants to keep their health in optimal, okay? Anybody who's really sick and need that extra warmth. We wanna call, you know, immunity, whatever they are going through, they gotta take four. Two is for, you know, normal people, you know, so they get a little bit tired, boom, take one in the morning to get them going. In the mid-afternoon, if they wanna take another one to carry out through of the evening, takes two, right? But if your body is not functioning the way you should, it needs extra. So, taking the whole box a day is okay. Remember, it's not harmful to kidney or liver or anything like that because it is functional food. All right, so you guys have to understand, two is for healthy people, normal people, two, that's daily supplement. But anybody who is weak and sick and going through chemo or whatever they're going through. They gotta at least take four, double up or whole box a day until their body gets, you know, the healing. And that, you know, stamina or energy or whatever you guys are looking for, know, your body will feel it. Then you could go back to two, right? But anybody who is ill, they gotta take more than two.
Yes.
Am I making myself clear? And it is lifetime, not only, you know, you take it for and then done and say, oh, it doesn't work. It is lifetime commitment, then you will be healthy, you know? The word says, rich man has a thousand, thousands of dreams. Thousands of dreams they wanna do, right? Sick man only has one. Right? Only thing they want is get healthy, sick man only wishes for one. Rich people, they have many, many wishes, many, many dreams, so what it is saying is that without help. There's nothing. So.
Thank you, madam. Thank you, thank you, everyone. Anyone in Kaurana matla devunthe, hand raise chandi, otherwise, we will close the session. Yes, sir, Naidi Garo, welcome.
Uh, hi, uh. Hello.
Yes, sir.
Uh, good evening.
Good evening, sir.
So, na wife ke, ipudo, yeh himo himmo, plus milk chesel gudachunde. Yeh neutrocidical mixu, himo himmo, milk chiselus, perudina. Yeh naal gutlo, yeh diyapudu yattla, morning nichi, eh, night varaku. Yeh, yeh, yeh vidanga veyali, ami eva naal game antundi. Yeh himo himmo.
Yeah, ante, ausarani bati sir, normal person should two work this coach.
Adi, adi, this kuntunna, ne, ne, this kuntunna, morning, evening.
Yeah, ipudu, valaki, ausarum undika bati.
Hmm.
Ausarum undika bati, three, four, five, six work guda recommend cheschandi, epes chaptavunaru.
But I'm body weak ga undi gada?
Yeah, adhikan yepesi, miru two ne use chandi, spirulona, daily three use chandi.
Hmm.
Milk chisel use cheska antunar ka bati.
Hmm.
Uh, neutrocidical mixu, mere regulara use chukunda, alternativa use chen.
Oh, alternate, you're a, I can?
Uh, madam ke.
Uh huh.
Weekly twice is enough, neutrocidical mixu.
Oh, weekly twice is enough.
Yeah, ante, miru, uh, inu, last one monthga, continuega use cheser gada?
Ah, no.
Uh, spirulona use chesnavu bati, daily neutrocidical mixu use chesnatund, ausarum ledu.
Okay, very nice, uh.
So, dani, ausarani bati, amki, digestion edana problem ga unna. Uh, edana kasta gas atlanipichnagaani, use chen, ante tapichchi rozai tausar ledu.
Very nice, right, uh.
So, milk chisel daily use chandi, spirulona.
Uh.
Daily, three times use chen.
Uh, okay, after, after, uh, any food.
Yes, sir, so konjam food ekku gata use kuntunnu, konjam better ga unnu, ante, himo himmo milk. Daily three guda use chetaniki try chen.
Ipudo, three years kuntundi, himo, himo, himo.
Okay.
So, milk chisel sangati?
Milk chisel paride two, sir. First time, just nengavati, paride two ayyti use chen, first montho.
Uh.
Uh, after that, second month nichi, ausarani bati, daily vekata, or, undan edi, manam continue chetha.
These are all after food, spirulina, milk chisel after food, after food.
Yeah.
Okay, right, hmm.
Miru, uh, after food this coach, spirulona, leda, with food guda this coach.
Oh, with food guda na, right, right, okay, uh huh. Okay, right. So, antenandi, that is a question from my end.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Right, thank you.
Vasu, is he, uh, his wife is the one who's battling cancer?
Yes.
No, pititurnal, pititurnal cancer, and stomach cancer.
Okay, so I talked to you before on Monday, I think, right?
Yes, 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 yeah, yes, ma'am, you, you, on, on that day, you talked with me.
Uh, he got milk chisel, uh, today, recently, uh, Tommy India launched the product.
Okay, this is what I wanna do, Vasu, okay? Um. He, he, he lives, I mean, he's close to your center, I was told, correct?
Let me pardon?
He's, you, you're very close to Vasu's center?
No, 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 we, we are at Visak and Vasu, Vasu Babu is at Hyderabad.
He is from Visak, Vishakapatnam.
Vishakapatnam.
Oh, okay, I thought he was close to you, somebody told me he lived fifteen or ten minutes away from your center.
Uh. Ten, ten hours, minimum ten to twelve hours journey.
Oh my!
Five hundred miles.
Okay.
One night journey.
One night journey. Um, but, the reason I'm asking is that, um. I would like to gift your wife a box of him or him. And I want you to give us, um, one boxes a day, six of them, right? And see how she feels, so you, Vasu, can you tell me how I could send him box of him or him? So, uh, let me know.
Yeah.
Uh, is he a member or, you know, you could send it to him and then you could give P V to whoever, um, you know, that you. Whatever, you know, so. You call me after meeting, so we could arrange this.
Sure, madam, thank you.
Indika ausarun ledu gandi, indiku, I, I, bichin, indigu manaki, me, de, ma, ja. Takuntan, yado, vaka, avimanutabampistundiga, bati, I have to accept it.
Okay.
Adi.
Thank you, madam, I, I will communicate and, uh, I, I will send.
Okay, so, uh, I will order it, um, or, or you order it, however is easy, you know, so, um. I could send you the money, or I could order through here, send it to, well, the address is so difficult in India, so I think it's better for you to do that.
Yeah, I, I will send, I have lot of stock in, uh, with me. I will, I will arrange.
Okay, all right, you do whatever and you let me know what I have to do, okay? Okay. But make sure, he takes, he gives his wife one box a day to, you know, kinda experiment. Is good, so.
Yes, yes, no.
Share your testimony.
Now she's so weak, that's why we are, we are giving the three or four per day. Him or him.
Okay, give her six, when you get my box, you give her six.
So, is it, is it advisable to, to, to give her six, uh, in, in a day?
But, uh. She's taking food very less, madam, that's why, uh, uh, problem with her.
See, when you, you know, when cancer patients, especially the stage four, um, when they go through the chemotherapy, they don't, they lose appetite. They, they don't wanna eat, himo him is the one that gives them energy. And then, of course, it builds the hemoglobin, the white cell, because with, without the white cell, you will not, they will not give you chemotherapy, you know that. So, what himo him does is it builds the hemoglobin red and white, especially white counts. So they were able to go through the chemo and then during that time, it gives them energy and desire to eat. Okay, that's why I want you to give her six, right?
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Share your testimony and ask for every, you know, so maybe two in the morning, two in the afternoon, two in the evening, right? So, do that.
Yeah, so, a- after, after using this, himo him only, she's recovering her health and her health now. The, that, the tumor, the tumor spits, you know, now it is, uh, improving. Our health.
It kills the cancer cells, you know, it is proven, there's no lie, we have a data to back it up. You know, it's been, I mean, you go to himo him on governmental site, it utterly kills the cancer cells. So, you know, believe in our product, this saved my life, when I had a dangu and my platelet was so low, I was supposed to be dead, seriously. I took six, I mean, six or seven a day, a day.
Oh.
And that's what, yes.
Great thing.
You know, one of the doctor who had a dangu at the same time with me, he was internally bleeding. And when he saw my paperwork, he said, you know, the doctor utterly said, Edi, you should be dead. And I said, well, I'm here, I am, you know, but. You know, this is, you know, I had the bruises in my legs, you know, I didn't know what it was, but he said, you're internally bleeding, that, you know, the signs of bleeding. And I said, you know, I don't believe that, and of course, you know, uh, I continued, I took himo him for whole month, seven boxes a day. I mean, seven sachets a day, and I went to go see a doctor and did the blood test. And my plate was up to normal. And then another month, I took seven a day, and within two months, I was back to normal. That's why, if anybody says anything of, I mean, I have so much testimony on him or him. Because it brought me to life twice. You know, if you guys don't, if you don't know my age, I'm sixty-four, right? And, um. I, I got more energy than all you guys put together, probably, right? Um.
M- my wife here is also sixty-eight, ma'am.
See, she should be, you know, strong and beautiful, so when she gets well, you know, she's gonna start using the absolute skincare system. Because it's de-aging system, my team knows me for two, three, four, five years and. Vasu, can, can you vouch, I'm, I, I feel like I'm getting younger, people tell me I'm getting younger as I'm getting older. How is that possible? So how, how can not, you know, not share Adami with others and they see me and they just, okay, I'll take whatever you're using. It's that simple, because I'm genuine, I don't lie about anything, I don't have to lie about anything about my product. Because I'm so, my eyes sparkles when I talk about my skincare and I know, you know, uh. What I look like, every time I look at it in the morning, get ready, it's like, wow, you know, uh. I don't know, I just cannot say, it's proven. Like our chairman says, our skincare system, you can't even touch for four, five thousand dollar outside market. And we're the only one has a Sejo, King Sejo award out of. Over, almost, close to two hundred thousand skincare system, we're the only one has that award. So how can you argue? So anyhow, yes, our stuff is totally amazing, thank you, sorry.
Really great, ma'am, great, ma'am. So wonderful.
Thank you, madam.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, sir, Naidi Garo.
Thank you, thank you, right. Thanks, hello.
Yes, friends, anyone in Kaurana interact ayyadunte, hand raise smart lada chandi, otherwise, we will close the session. Thank you, madam, thanks for your, uh, regular support.
I came in twice when you guys weren't there, I, I was so surprised, I think I came in on Wednesday, I thought, I don't, maybe I was late, I don't know. But anyhow, let's do company motto!
Yes, 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 madam.
Get me all excited for the day!
Welcome all for the company motto, unmute yourself, anderu vada unmute chesko chandi.
Yes.
Madam?
Are we ready?
Yes!
Yes! Yes! Okay, cherish the spirit!
Cherish the spirit.
Raise the vision!
Raise the vision.
Follow the faith!
Follow the faith.
Turbin humility!
Turbin humility.
Humility.
Come on, come on, let's do it!
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 And for me, ajah, ajah, ajah!
Ajah, ajah, ajah!
Ajah!
Thank you, ladies, thank you.
Love you guys!
Thank you, madam, have a great weekend.